I'd like to call the meeting, uh, school, regular school committee meeting to order of Wednesday, June fourteenth. Um, would you please stand to salute the flag? While we salute the flag tonight, I want us all to remember that it is Flag Day and the history of our great red, white, and blue, what it means and what it's meant to many people that protect us under its light. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Superintendent has a memorial tonight.
If you could please keep in your thoughts some prayers. The family of Mary O'Connor, uh, Mary O'Connor is an employee of QPS that recently passed away. Uh, Mary was a retired teacher who taught at Gridley Bryant, Parker, and Snug Harbor Elementary Schools for over thirty years. Again, if you could keep Mary O'Connor and her, and her family in your thoughts and prayers. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived, by those present and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. Would you call the roll, Superintendent?
Mr. Bragoli.
President.
Mrs. Cahill.
President.
Mr. Guttrow.
President.
Mrs. Hubley.
President.
Mrs. Lebo.
President.
Mr. Santoro.
President.
And Mayor Koch.
President.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the regular, uh, meeting minutes of May seventeenth. Um, on a motion of Mrs. Lebo, seconded by Mrs. Hubley, we approve. All those in favor? Opposed? The ayes have it. Entertaining a motion to approve the executive session minutes of May seventeenth as well. Motion of Mrs. Cahill, seconded by Mr. Guttrow, we approve. All those in favor? Opposed? The ayes have it. And also the fiscal twenty twenty-four budget public hearing minutes. I'll take a motion of Mr. Bragoli, seconded by Mrs. Hubley. All those in favor? Opposed? The ayes have it. At this time, uh, open forum is an opportunity for community input regarding the Quincy Public Schools community. In this context, the community is defined as a resident of the city, a parent of a student who attends QPS, or an employee of QPS. Non-community people may, are not permitted to speak at the open forum, but they may submit written statements to the school committee. If you are speaking after giving his or her name and address, each speaker may make a presentation of no more than four minutes to the school committee. An individual may not exchange their time or yield to others. And interested parties may also submit written statements to QSCO Open Forum at quinseypublicschools.com. Is there anybody for open forum? Seeing none, we'll go to item two, I'm sorry, item three, Superintendent's report. First report, Chairman's report by Mayor Koch. Mayor Koch.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. Um, I just want to take a minute. I know this is the last meeting of our, uh, school year. Um, and I know we're all looking forward to some summer time off. I just want to take a couple of minutes from my perspective and just recap, uh, a few things, uh, for this past year. And I, I think to some degree, in the spirit of the graduations, we could recap the entire year. Um, I know I say it publicly, you get sick of hearing it probably, but, you know, graduation night is, is one of my favorites because everything we do here and everything that happens in every one of our school buildings, um, really is all about getting those kids to that point. And, um, I think we do it well in this city. I think we do it well with, with the Quincy Public Schools and the Quincy Public Schools family. Um, I thought both evenings were tremendous. I mean, I know there was sweating it out about the weather, uh, getting the last minute forecasts, but we got them both in. But both nights, the speeches were inspiring, articulate, the kids were well spoken, they were positive. Um, I was just so, so impressed, uh, with both evenings, with each of the children and their perspectives on life in the school and going forward. Um, so that, that certainly, as chair, made me feel good. Then it makes you reminisce a little bit about the year and some of the challenges we dealt with as a committee and, uh, as a system. And I, I want to thank each of my colleagues for your thoughtful work and, uh, all along the year. Uh, I know that there's times we disagree on some things, but overall, I think we've been, uh, in unison on doing what's best for the system. And, uh, of course, it helps to have some healthy budgets and it helps to get the, the contracts settled, uh, for sure. But in, in that light, I want to thank the colleagues. I want to thank the superintendent and the assistant superintendent, the entire leadership team, superintendent's leadership team, the principals of our buildings. Every building, um, has a different spirit, almost has a different culture in it. They're unique to themselves. The principals do a remarkable job bringing together the staff, the teachers, uh, all those folks that are employed in those buildings, again, for the benefit of our, of our kids. And then, of course, it's, it's primarily the teacher in the classroom, but it's the paraprofessionals, it's the secretaries, uh, it's admin, it's custodians, it's security, it's the bus drivers, it's the lunch matrons, it's the traffic supervisors, uh, to some degree, public maintenance, Department of Natural Resources, all those folks that work hard each and every day to provide that great experience in the classroom. Um, so I know that we've had some ups and downs, but I think we're in a good place. Um, and of course, we've, we have a healthy budget, which was certainly evidenced by nobody up at the microphone during the public hearing, um, complaining about any shortfalls. So I just want to say a job well done to the committee, to the superintendent, his team, to our principals, to our teachers, entire staff. So with that, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. We'll proceed to item B, class of twenty twenty-three graduations. Um, oh, this is all.
Superintendent's report.
So the superintendent, you will go for this one. Okay, go ahead.
Thank you very much and good evening, everyone. Everyone is doing well. Before I do get into the superintendent's report, I do want to just address, uh, the issue that happened yesterday at Central Middle School, just briefly. Um, as everyone knows, there was a student that brought a firearm to school yesterday. It was an unloaded firearm, but a firearm nonetheless. Obviously, it was extremely shocking to everyone involved, uh, students, parents, and of course, myself and the SLT and all of the staff in that building. I just want to review with everyone what, uh, steps we took, uh, since that became, um, known to us. I do also have several people to thank. Um, first off, I do want to thank the parent and students who reported this incident immediately upon hearing of it. There was rumors out there that perhaps this had been seen earlier in the day. That is not the case. Uh, the gun was first known to exist when the students left the school for the day. Just after two-thirty outside, the, uh, the gun was shown to three other students. They immediately reported it to their parent and, parent and three students came into the building and reported to administration, who then reported it to myself, the SLT, and the Quincy Police Department, who conducted an investigation. I have to thank the Quincy Police Department for doing a thorough and very swift investigation. Because of their efforts, we were able to, they were able to seize the gun, uh, and that is in custody, uh, with the Quincy Police. And of course, there'll be legal consequences, I'm sure, relative to that. Um, and that will be in the hands of the Quincy Police. We then took it from a school perspective to initiate, obviously, student discipline, uh, procedures, which will move forward. Um, of course, as I said in my letter, the student will not be returning to Central Middle School. We, of course, will take this, um, extremely, extremely seriously. It's one of the most dangerous events we've seen in quite a long time in Quincy and will take, um, you know, what happened very seriously and significant disciplinary consequences will result. Um, a letter went out last night, as you know, myself and Mrs. Perkins and Mrs. Roy and Mrs. Papil and other members of the SLT. Mr. Drakeo worked on that throughout the night to make sure that we presented a letter that respected the privacy of all involved, but also gave enough information to the community so that they knew the steps that we took to make sure that the community, uh, was safe. And, um, that letter went out last night. Uh, this morning, we met with our staff at seven-thirty this morning, the entire SLT, as well as representatives from the Quincy Police Department, met with the staff. We had a very engaging discussion with the staff, uh, on various questions that they had, but namely, they needed to know the facts of the situation. Uh, one of the, um, issues that were brought up was obviously the, um, well-being of the student, uh, the student that brought their gun to school. And as we all said, we will ensure that that student will, um, be taken care of as any student would be in need, uh, as well as, you know, balancing the need of that student and the disciplinary consequences and the safety of the community. So I just wanted the community to know that we're not only thinking about the safety of the community, but also the well-being of the student that brought the firearm to school and will make sure that that is the case moving forward, while also protecting the community and the staff. The staff did an excellent job with regard to reviewing with all of our students today, um, the facts that happened. We did this through our typical process of doing student circles, uh, which allows students to, um, let staff know what their concerns are so that we can address them, as well as reinforcing to students that it's critical that if you see something concerning, say something immediately so that it can be addressed. And of course, we, we reinforce that and obviously made sure that all of our students were thanked, particularly those three students that had the courage to report what was going on. And of course, we'll be working with the Quincy Police Department moving forward. We intend on working with the Quincy Police Department to put an informational flyer together that we'll send out to our families on gun safety, making sure that guns in the home are, uh, locked and kept away from children. Uh, I can't, uh, stress that enough because we cannot have a situation like this happening again. I know the police chief was extremely concerned, as well as all the school resource officers, and they've been working with us very, very closely in managing the situation, making sure that the situation was handled as smoothly as possible. Uh, and again, I can't thank them enough and their continued work with us in getting this information out to families, which will be sent out soon. But I also wanted the opportunity for a school committee to ask any questions that they may have. But again, I do want to make sure I thank all of our staff, our SLT, our staff in the building, of course, our administrators at Central, Principal De Cristofaro and the Assistant Principal, uh, as well, and, uh, all of the staff at, uh, Central Middle School, who did a phenomenal job today working with our students. So if anyone has any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Questions, comments? Mrs. Hubley.
Thank you. And guidance was available at the school this morning for any student that might need to have talked to someone?
Yes, they were. Yeah. Assistant Principal Kathy Mahoney, along with Mar Popil, uh, made sure that guidance was there to organize any, uh, guidance assistance that students may need.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Thank you, Superintendent.
Thank you.
Item B, class of twenty twenty-three graduations.
The weather cooperated for our two ceremonies last Monday and Tuesday at Veterans Memorial Stadium, where over seven hundred and fifty graduates were recognized by Mayor Koch, the Quincy School Committee, and the City Council, as well as the state legislative delegation, the high school staff and administrators. A big thank you to everyone responsible for making these, uh, events go off. Uh, regardless of weather, uh, we were able to get them off and I think everyone had a fantastic time. So many people were involved in putting this together, city side maintenance, Mr. Murphy's, uh, office as well. Um, and I know Mr. Murphy will be presenting later today. Uh, and of course, thank you to the mayor and the school committee, and also all of the city councils and the state delegation and county delegations that showed up to show support to our students. So thank you, everyone, for making it a great night. Next is the QPS Spring High School Athletics Update for Boys Volleyball. After defeating South Lancaster Academy in a preliminary round, number thirty-two seed Quincy High School was defeated by number-one seed Needham. After winning against Nipmuck in the first round, number-three seed North Quincy High School won over Long Meadow in the second round before being defeated by O'Brien High School in the quarterfinals. Congratulations to our students who did a, uh, a great job in those athletic events. Twenty students from the combined Quincy, North Quincy Outdoor Track and Field Team qualified the Division One State Championships with two students placing in the top five for four-hundred-meter hurdles. In baseball, North Quincy High School beat Grafton in a preliminary round game before being defeated by Milton High School in the first, in the first round. In tennis, both the boys and girls North Quincy High School teams qualified for the MIAA tournament, but both were eliminated in the first round matches against Melrose and Wellesley. Congratulations to our, our spring athletes for lacrosse, softball, baseball, outdoor track and field, and girls golf. Special thanks to the Department of Natural Resources for their support in maintaining the fields and collaborating on scheduling during the busy spring season. So thank you, Mr. Murphy. Recent Quincy Public School events. With the last few weeks of school, there are many events, activities for Quincy Public School students, including field trips, fly-up days for students transitioning to new schools, field days, school dances, memorial and Flag Day observances, concerts, and promotion ceremonies, just to name a few. Here are a few highlights. On Thursday, June eighth, one hundred incoming seniors from Quincy High School and North Quincy High School were invited to attend the annual leadership summit at the Granite Links. These students learned about communication, appropriate social media usage, and positive interactions with peers. Thank you to the YMCA for assisting, uh, with this leadership summit this year. Thanks to the support of the Quincy School Community Partnership and grant funding from Betel Institute, seven hundred and thirty grade-two students enjoyed field trips to Holly Hill Farms in Cohasset in May and June. The partnership with Holly Hill will continue in the summer Bridge Program at Clifford Marshall Elementary School with a weekly visit from Farmer Bruce and the Science of Gardening. The annual special education track and field event took place on May twenty-sixth at Creedon Field. Elementary and middle school special education students enjoyed the games and activities and a cookout supported by high school student volunteers. Thanks to our transportation vendors, VHS, One Call, Mass Quality Ride, and Raz for providing the funding for lunch, and the Quincy High School Culinary Department for providing the box lunches to our students and staff. Thanks also to the Quincy Police Department for providing comfort dogs for the event. And of course, I want to thank our own staff, Mr. Drakeo and all of the SLT and Mrs. Graham from the Special Education Department to making sure that this event went off smoothly. Our students had a fantastic time, so thank you all. Uh, Quincy Public Schools' first-ever all-city middle school chorus recently completed in the music at the Parks Festival at Six Flags New England. After an outstanding performance, the students won first place in the division, as well as best overall performance for middle schools. Thanks to Coral Teacher Joanna Campitello for her work with the students this year, and congratulations to those students as well. And lastly, um, I do want to take this moment to recognize one of our, uh, great employees who is leaving us, um, Madeline Roy, Senior Director of Curriculum. Uh, will be moving on at the end of the month, and I just wanted to make sure that I recognize Maddie's eleven-plus years with the district. Maddie is an amazing human being, uh, and an amazing colleague. Uh, it will certainly be missed by me, in particular, by Erin, our Assistant Superintendent, Erin Perkins, and all of the SLT. Uh, it's a big loss for us, but I know that Maddie has great things ahead for her in the future, and we miss, we wish Maddie all the best in all her future endeavors, and we hope, obviously, and know that Maddie will certainly, uh, maintain close relationships with her second home here in Quincy. Uh, and again, congratulations, Maddie, and thank you for everything you've done for me in particular and for QPS and all of our students and our staff and the school committee and the entire community. Really, Maddie, you have been fantastic getting us through the COVID years and all of the crises that have happened in the last three years. You've been amazing. Um, you know, we've been a great team and I thank you for everything that you've done for QPS. And I know Mrs. Perkins, uh, would like to say a few words as well. So thank you, Maddie.
I just want to echo what the superintendent said. I think that Maddie and I have worked together for so long now. We've worked together for eleven years, side by side, day in and day out. We often joke that we share a brain. Um, and so, you know, I, I am, I am gonna miss her, um, like I would miss my sister. And, uh, I so appreciate everything that she's done for the district, everything that she's done for me personally. Um, I've learned so much. I grew up with her in this school system and became the administrator I am today, thanks to her mentorship and her leadership and her guidance. And so I just wanted to wish her the best, and I know that we will remain besties as she moves on. And, uh, I know she'll be, be my ear when I need it. She'll be listening to me when I need some advice and support as I move forward in my own career, and I will be there for her as well. Thank you.
I, I just wanted to wish Maddie well and say, um, having been on the school committee five years, I, I learned an extraordinary amount from you. Um, su, you know, super helpful, especially early on. When you come before this body, you know, and I said this to you at the graduation, there are a lot of people that work in QPS, but there are few that touch every student. And, and when I was at graduation, you know, the, the fact that you manage curriculum for, for all of QPS means you touch the curriculum for every student every step of the way. And so I looked at those graduates that night and I looked at you, and I thought, you, how proud you must feel because in, in more than a small way, you, you've made a considerable difference in their lives. And I've seen, um, how we've modified some of the curriculum based on the recommendations, how we had to shift gears during the pandemic, so many different things. Your institutional memory, your, um, leadership, you know, quiet leadership, just the way that you come prepared to every meeting will leave a, a big hole and, um, but I'm gonna miss you. You know, I think, I know the whole school committee is gonna miss you, so I wish it will.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mrs. Lebo.
Yeah, I'm gonna miss you too. To talk about having done stuff for us, we have learned so much from you, and you understand the communication so much better than a lot of people do. You re, and you re, you just have been so helpful, Maddie, I can't get over it. But the one thing I want to say about you is that out of every single person in this room, you're the only one that I could never find one person who didn't like you. Really. There isn't, there isn't one teacher out there who think, doesn't think you're awesome. And I don't think that's true of any of us, anybody else in the room. So that's an amazing thing, that you have that kind of demeanor with people, they feel completely supported with you, and, uh, the teachers just absolutely love you. Thank you for everything.
Mayor Koch.
Just a big thank you, Maddie. I mean, I, you know, I've, I've never seen you unprepared, always thoughtful, always respectful, unflappable, and the amount of the questions at the table here, uh, you represented the district so well in so many ways. So we're gonna miss your leadership, but we wish you all the best and many years of happiness and good health. Thank you so much, Maddie.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Bragoli.
Just, I come to respect you, I mean, just watching you, your professionalism, uh, and the way you conduct yourself, the way you present, um, I learned a lot from you. Um, and, you know, you can't teach it in old dog new tricks, but I learned some new things from you. So, um, I'm gonna miss you. I, I, I just, it's gonna be a hole, it's gonna be a void. Um, and you've done a great job and I appreciate you. So, good luck.
Thank you, everyone.
Okay, thank you all. Okay, moving on to old business. We have the fiscal year twenty twenty-four Quincy Public Schools budget, and this is up for a vote. Mayor Koch.
Uh, we had some discussions, not long ones, but we had some discussions. I know there was some discussion about some of the class sizes, and that's been addressed in the budget, uh, with additional staff being hired. It's a healthy budget. Uh, as I mentioned earlier, there was, uh, there was no public input that I'm aware of. I don't know if we've gotten anything since in the office, which is usually a good sign. I can remember the years, my early years, when the line went out the doors and, um, when people were, were unhappy. I think it's a good budget, uh, so at this point, that would move passage.
Okay, we have a motion. An emotion of, motion by Mrs. Hubley, seconded by Mr. Guttrow. Superintendent, please call the roll.
Mr. Bragoli? Yes. Mrs. Cahill?
Yes.
Mr. Guttrow?
Yes.
Mrs. Hubley?
Yes.
Mrs. Lebo?
Yes.
Assistant Director?
Yes.
Mayor Koch?
Yes.
Thank you.
Item five, new business. Department of Natural Resource update. We have Commissioner Murphy with us this evening. Nice suit, Mr. Murphy.
You too. Thank you.
Table, the floor is yours.
Mr. Mayor, members of the school committee, Superintendent Mulvey, member of your team, thank you for this opportunity to come before you and present the hard work of the men and women of the Department of Natural Resources. Uh, before I, I had, give a brief update, I do want to thank you for your service and the work of the school department. I'm now the proud father of two graduates of the Quincy Public School System with a third one tracking along the way, and I, uh, can't say enough about the experience that we've had as a family and my, uh, children have had as students because of the commitment that this city makes to our public school system. So I, I want to thank you publicly as a parent, if I can take that indulgence before I get into the updated, uh, we've had a tremendous experience and I want to thank you. So, um, just briefly, I want to talk about some of the partnerships we have with the public school system. The employees that we, uh, have been working with, uh, throughout the years, uh, have been really of the highest quality. Um, you know, we're working very closely with your athletic director, Mr. Mahoney, a true professional, uh, to make sure that our student athletes play on what I think are the finest, uh, playing fields, uh, around. Um, you know, I've had the opportunity to do a lot of traveling. Uh, some of my, uh, sons play different sports and we go to different communities, and I'm extremely proud through the support of the mayor, um, of the facilities that we're able to provide. Now, you don't have to take my word for it, as we speak, the MIA is playing their state championship, uh, right now in both, uh, girls and boys lacrosse at Veteran Stadium. So, um, I think people would expect me to say that, but I think the proof is in the pudding. And when, uh, the state, um, has an opportunity to go any community that they want to and they choose Quincy, I think that speaks to the quality that we're providing. Um, you know, I'm very happy about, uh, not just the stadium, but Adams, Mitchell McCoy, and it was touched on by the superintendent, um, you know, we now have a Furnacebrook Golf Course in our inventory, and I'm extremely proud of the work we've done with Coach Doyle and the combined girls golf team to provide them a home. When we first took over the golf course in January of last year, uh, we reached out to, uh, Coach Doyle, and there were some times where they would be bounced from practice time and, and matches, and, uh, we really wanted to provide them a consistent home, and we're very proud, uh, to have them at Furnacebrook. We also, uh, like to take the opportunity to share a little bit of history. In the Guinness Book of World Records, the longest female hole-in-one in golf history was on the first hole at Furnacebrook Golf Course. So it's got a strong place in the history of women's golf, and we're very proud to have our combined team now calling that their home. Uh, Quincy High Boys also play up there. Coach Salbucci, um, is phenomenal. Uh, he runs a lot of our youth clinics as well. And the golf course has become a, a real community asset that's allowing us and our, our young people, uh, an opportunity to be introduced to the game of golf. Uh, golf, as you know, has a number of barriers to entry. The equipment is expensive, uh, you know, some people have a tough time affording greens fees through our recreation program. Uh, and Mrs. Hanley, along with Tom LSR GM and Pro up there, we have beginner golf lessons, we have, uh, youth golf clinics. We're starting a youth golf league, and we really want to, uh, bring as many people as we can into, uh, the game of golf. Um, I do want to, uh, mention some of the other programs, the non-athletic programs that we've worked on closely with the school department. Uh, this year, I have never, uh, seen as strong a turnout from the schools as we had on Clean and Green at Quincy. I think every one of your principals, uh, jumped right into Clean and Green at Quincy. When I say jumped right in, when we, the mayor and I had an opportunity to visit many of the schools, it, they were difficult to recognize because they had jeans and, and their work clothes on, and they were side by side with a lot of the PTOs and parents and students, um, improving the grounds of the schools, uh, and doing an excellent job. Um, we recently partnered on the multicultural festival at, it was Full Riverfield this year. I expect that, uh, we'll probably be able to return, uh, up to a renovated pageant field for next year's event, a fantastic event, uh, brought forward by the, um, the school parents, and, um, I think it was a great success, uh, and I look forward to that continued partnership as well. Superintendent touched on the graduation. Uh, we had, uh, two excellent graduations and, um, we were able to get them in without much, uh, impact from the, uh, weather interruption. We have a number of school field days that are happening throughout the month of June that we're working with the school principals and teachers on. Uh, I want to thank Ms. Loftus at Lincoln Hancock School. We had a very fun, uh, Arbor Day, uh, and Earth Day celebration over at Lincoln Hancock. It's, uh, really enjoyable for my staff to go out and interact with the students. Um, they, they talk about it for weeks after it happens. We planted a tree, uh, along with the help of the students, and everybody got their own seedling to take home with them. Uh, so it was a, a great partnership and a great program, and it helps further our missions. We're trying to build stewards for the future, uh, of this city and the work that we do. And certainly, any opportunity that we get to get into the schools and the classroom and work with the young people, um, is an opportunity, I think, to, uh, really educate folks about what we're trying to accomplish, and I think it goes a really long way. Uh, I do want to commend, um, the school committee for your continued support of the music programs in Quincy. I, I'm amazed at every event that I go to, uh, whether it's the band concerts, but in particular, uh, the parades, the Flag Day Parade most recently, uh, and the Memorial Day Parade. The combined marching band is the best band in the parades, uh, every single year now, and that's, uh, a result of the commitment the school committee, uh, and the school department has made to building up our music program. has made to building up our music program. And as someone who sits on the Flag Day Parade Committee, it certainly brings us a great sense of pride to see our students marching down the street in those beautiful uniforms. And the quality of the music is really second to none in the course of the parade. I do want to touch on some of the challenges that we face, particularly as it relates to the maintenance at some of the school. As you know, many of our newer schools are constructed with MS4 stormwater management programs in mind, whether it's Southwest or Central. We have many bioswales and the goal is to capture as much stormwater on site as possible. We continue to come up with creative ways to try to make sure we're maintaining those in the proper manner after they're built. We do have some challenges with maintenance on some of the outdoor classrooms that we're working through with some of the principals. You know, we can certainly do that. Some of the raised planters are great for the first couple of years. And then whether it's the PTO parent or whether it's the teacher that moves on. So we open, we have a great line of communication. The principal level in this district is really fantastic, phenomenal group of folks that we work very closely with and communicate on a regular basis. Upcoming projects for some of the facilities that directly impact our students and our school system. We're working with the DCR, which is the former MDC, to plant trees at both the Moncler School and at Atlantic Middle School. DCR is eligible to plant within certain areas of the city. And we've developed an excellent partnership. In addition to the 400 trees that the mayor gives us an appropriation to plant, we've worked with DCID to plant a similar amount throughout the city. So we're up to about 800 trees per year. And we are looking at a planting at both Moncler and Atlantic for this year. This summer, late this summer, we're trying to thread a needle between the rec season and the beginning of school. The basketball court at Marshall needs some work. There are some cracks in the court down at Marshall. We're looking to do a seal crack and repaint down at Marshall before the school convenes again in September. We do want to be respectful of our rec programs and make sure that we don't take that offline. So we'll be doing that probably sometime in late August. And many of our playgrounds in our schools have a combination of the new poured-in-place rubber, which has increased accessibility to all of our playgrounds for anybody that has accessibility concerns. But we still maintain a number of the playground chips that need to be replenished on an annual basis. So we are planning in August to go in and make sure that when the students return in September, all of our playgrounds are fully replenished and safe and ready to go for the, for the school season. So that's my brief presentation and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Commissioner. Questions, comments? Mrs. Lebo.
Thank you, Commissioner. That was wonderful. I think I was going to mention the MIA finals if you hadn't, because I think that really speaks to how, I mean, we, our kids have access to this all the time. But for those two towns, and what were the towns? Westwood and?
Noah.
Yeah. So those towns to come here and see what we have in the city of Quincy is pretty phenomenal. It really is. And the parks look lovely. They really do. I have one question for you, one request. On the rec programs, we had a special needs subcommittee meeting a couple of weeks ago, and the parents are really trying to get some programs for the special needs students out of the recreation department. And Mr. Bragoli and I would love to meet with those, with somebody from the recreation department because we have some ideas about Learn to Ride the Bike program that we could bring in. And so we'd like to have a chance to meet with those people and see if we bring somebody from the special needs program in with us, if that would be okay with you.
Thank you, Mr. J. I think that would be fantastic. Ms. Hanley has built up the therapeutic recreation program during the summer months pretty rapidly over the course of the last few years, understanding that there's a need in this particular area that we can, I think, meet better than we had historically. So we'd love to, we'd love to partner with you on that.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Any else? Mr. Bragoli.
I have the pleasure of meeting with Mr. Murphy once a month, Park and Recreation Board. And he's always very well-prepared and a real professional. He takes pride in his job and he, he does, he works hard at it. And the proof is in the pudding. I mean, you look around the city and you can see the results of his work and his staff. So again, I don't know where you learned all that stuff, but it was, it's great. It's really outstanding, Dave. I'm serious. You do a great job. Really appreciative.
Mr. Guttrow.
Congratulations on your graduate. Thank you. So you mentioned the longest hole-in-one in women's, in the Guinness Book of World Record. I have trouble hitting that green in two or three. So that's pretty impressive. So you know, the quality of the fields, I think, when you sit on the side of the table are measured by the phone calls you get or in this case, you don't get. And when we don't get phone calls, that means you're doing a hell of a job. And whether it's a park or a playground or a school ground, there are a few calls, I think, that come into the school committee. And, you know, we go back a long time, Dave. I really believe that's because you take such pride in what you do. And you know the city inside and out. You know the parks, the playgrounds, the school grounds. You've got a great team on your side. And it's the pride that, that it allows us not to get complaints, but oftentimes get the, get the kudos for the work that you and your team do. So I appreciate that. And the only thing I had was the exact same thing Mrs. Lebo and Mrs. Bragoli, Mr. Bragoli said about QPAC coming before us and those opportunities for specialized students. So thinking about that, you know, whether, if it's a budgetary thing, come back, let us know what the story is. But it was clear that what Michelle has done has resonated and supremely popular for those students. And any expansion would be welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Koch.
Just want to express my gratitude as well. Some of you know that I put a lot more responsibility on this department. We've expanded it. There's five divisions now and Dave has a Mr. Beat. I promised him more help, more labors going forward. I'll say it publicly, the next budget commissioner will make sure you get that help because you are taking care of a lot more property, a lot more park space, open space in a more careful way. I know that we all appreciate our parks. We appreciate our open spaces and marshlands and all. But in many cases, a lot of those properties, it kind of fell between whose responsibility it was to clean it up. You know, it might have been Conservation Commission oversee that nobody disturbs the wetland. But there was that continued maintenance issue all the time. And now with your full staff, your earth scientist and arborist and, you know, we're really doing the job, I think, as we should do for these parcels, for these pieces of land. Many of them were donated by different families over time. So just job well done. Thank you, my friend. Keep up the good work.
Certainly appreciate all your support, Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Cahill.
I just want to say one thing. The partners, it's a partnership, you know, between the department and the school committee and the school system, but also the mayor. And I mean, the mayor has really given the school system and the Department of Natural Resources the resources that we need to get, have the services and the parks and the city being the way it is. It doesn't just happen. It's good leadership, good leadership and resources and money. And we have to be thankful for that because if it isn't important to you, it's not important to the people that work in the city and get their job done. So thank you for everything. We're very lucky. We're fortunate. I think when people come to the city now and they take a good look, I was at the graduations and I was sitting in that stadium and I was like, it's amazing. So hopefully people recognize that. I think we do. And thank you for everything. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mrs. Lebo.
I just want to add one more thing that I'll actually bump into the commissioner and the mayor working at 8:30 in the morning on Sunday morning for getting ready for an event. I was glad they weren't on overtime. So that's the kind of commitment these people have. The two of them were out there working. Really, it's amazing. It really is amazing. Just thank you again.
Thank you, Commissioner. Who? Mr. Mulvey.
Thank you. I just want to thank Commissioner as well. We can email you at any time. Usually it's either extremely early in the morning or extremely late at night and you get back to us. I can't, thank you enough for the partnership that you, that we have in the city. And of course, thanks for the mayor and everything he does with regard to the funding of the projects that we have in common. But I just want to thank you for all the work and your team do for QPS. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Item B, Reach Program Update. We have Ms. Vaughn, Ms. Cardero, Ms. Davis, and Ms. DeGuero. We don't have Ms. Roy.
I know.
Roll set.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Bridgette Vaughn, the district coordinator of literacy in ELA for the Quincy Public Schools. And I've also been deeply involved with the expansion of enrichment for students in grades K to five over the past few years. So I'm thrilled to be here tonight to share with you some updates about Quincy Public Schools' enrichment opportunities in our K to five schools, including our wonderful Reach program. For those that are not familiar, Reach is a school-based educational program for students in grades four and five who demonstrate advanced learning potential. In addition, we offer enrichment opportunities for all students within the general education programming. We're extremely thankful for your continued support of these endeavors, and we think you'll be really impressed when you see what our Reach staff has been able to accomplish this year. With me tonight are two of our Reach teachers, Rebecca Cordiero and Dawn Chardy. We also have a third full-time Reach teacher, Casey DeGuero, and also Holly Davis, who splits time with instructing a grade four Reach group and serves as a math interventionist. This evening, Mrs. Cordiero and Mrs. Chardy will mostly share curriculum updates about what students are doing in grades four and grade five Reach. But they'll also share how they support enrichment in all grade levels by collaborating with teachers, observing students, providing enrichment and extension support with our Tier One Core Curriculum Resources, and offering professional development. The expansion of enrichment in K to five has been a tremendous asset to all stakeholders, especially our students. Our Reach teachers wear lots of hats, as we all do in this field. They serve as educators and instructors, consultants, professional development providers, curriculum developers, colleagues, and team members. More importantly, though, they are part of the climate and culture of each of the schools that they work in. I'd like to begin by discussing who participates in Reach in grades four and five. Grade four Reach students are in the top 10% of students at their school, while grade five students are in the top 20%. Grade four Reach occurs once a month at every school on Wednesdays. Grade five Reach occurs once a week at every school on Mondays, Tuesdays, Thursdays, and Fridays. This past year, we had 77 students participate in grade four and 164 in grade five. So this slide just shows a sample schedule of what happens during the day for a student in grade five Reach. Students begin the day in their homeroom, and then they go to Reach and begin a higher-level thinking challenge. Typically, the morning includes writing and collaborative learning activities and lessons. Students attend lunch, recess, and all specialist classes with their homerooms. The afternoon is filled with STEAM activities and lessons, as well as project-based learning. And finally, students return to their homeroom for dismissal. So now I'm going to hand the presentation over to Mrs. Cordiero to share how enrichment is supported at all grade levels.
Thank you. Good evening. This year, we've seen our role expand beyond our Reach classes. We've made ourselves available to all classroom teachers at all grade levels to consult with student concerns, curriculum materials, and lesson plans to engage their high-achieving students. We are also always currently working on finding and curating curriculum materials, especially for students in grades K to three, that we don't directly service with our Reach program. We're also working with our curriculum coordinators, Bridgette and Kim Quinn, to create activities and extensions that support our new programs in ELA and Math, CKLA and IM. Looking ahead, our goal is to create a Google Classroom with enrichment materials and lessons and activities at all grade levels. We're looking to create a website for teachers that will include articles about research and links to best practices for engaging and differentiating for high-achieving students. On Election Day, we will be offering a professional development session geared toward classroom teachers seeking effective strategies to differentiate instruction for advanced learners. It's now my pleasure to turn the presentation over to Dawn Chardy, who will tell you some of the curriculum highlights from grade five this year.
Thank you. We've had a great year with our fifth graders. I'm happy to share what we've been working on. In mathematics this year, like last year, students participated in weekly logic and problem-solving activities. This year, we added a year-end math meet, which was a problem-solving competition. Top scorers at each school were awarded medals and certificates. We also added a year-long stock market activity. At the beginning of the year, students were introduced to the stock market, taught how to research and analyze stock performance using data, and given $10,000 to create a portfolio of three to five stocks. Throughout the year, students tracked their stocks weekly in Google Sheets and did a mid-year analysis of their portfolios' performance. The novel Fever 1793 was so well-received by our students last year that we decided to do a year-long study of it once again. Students also had the opportunity to enhance their research and presentation skills with three research projects throughout the year. They researched eco-friendly building products and created an infographic on Canva. And you can see an example of that on the slide, as well as a student holding her infographic. They researched a famous architect and created a Google Slide presentation. And they participated in a newly-added science symposium where they researched a scientific question and created a video using Canva to share. And you can see a picture of one of the videos and the architect slides. This year, we added famous artist studies to our curriculum. Students learned about famous artists and their work. And then we challenged them with creating their own pieces inspired by our featured artists. On this slide, you can see student work from our study of Brazilian artist Romero Brito, French artist Henri Matisse, and American glass artist Dale Chehuli. Like last year, Reach students participated in STEM challenges. On this slide, you can see students work from our Famous Tower Challenge. In these photos, you can see students were successfully able to create the Eiffel Tower and the Seattle Space Needle with limited time and supplies. In regards to technology, students worked on creating a digital portfolio on Google Sites, so their own website, learned how to create stop-motion and claymation videos using Stop Motion Animator, and learned how to create different types of digital products on the Canva platform. Reach students, once again, participated in the very popular cross-curricular Tiny House project. Photos from the project's different phases are shared on the slide. Students begin in the role of architect when they hand draw two-dimensional floor plans, which they then digitally recreate online in Floor Planner. From their two-dimensional plans, students then create elevation views of their tiny home. They are able to see the 3D renderings of their design in Floor Planner, so you can see that on the slide. And then following the design process, students then enter the build phase of this project. From their two-dimensional designs, they build a 3D model of their tiny home. And you can see an example of that in the slide, even with a built-in swimming pool. A quote from a student, "My favorite part was the tiny house because we made a digital house and made it come to life." In addition to the Tiny House project, another large-scale project our Reach students undertake is the narrative writing project, in which students are asked to create a fictional narrative. Students begin this project with brainstorming story ideas, developing characters, and working on plot maps. They then begin the writing of their stories. When their narratives have been written, revised, and edited, they are printed and put into hardcover books with covers illustrated by the students. And on the slide here, you can see a couple of examples of some books that were written this year, and one of our students proudly holding her published copy. A quote about this project, "My favorite part of Reach was writing the narrative. It was really fun to write the story because it brought out my creativity. I loved writing the narrative, so I wrote another to fulfill my dreams to maybe become an author. This is why I loved writing the narrative." And my colleague Rebecca Cordiero will now speak about our fourth-grade Reach program.
So we had another great year with grade four. Last year, you might remember, was our first year, and we began the grade four program in January. This year, we were able to hit the ground running in September. So I'd like to highlight some of the new lessons we've added this year. We began the year by exploring binary code, which is used by every single piece of technology that's computerized. Students are already very familiar with counting and Students are already very familiar with counting and computing in base-10, so it was really fun to challenge them by thinking and introducing a number system that uses base-two. Students learned how computers use binary code to translate electrical signals into letters, numbers, and characters, and then they were given different colored beads to create a bracelet that displayed their initials in binary code. And another new lesson for grade four this year explored the work of Black artist Alma Woodsey Thomas. She's a fascinating artist to learn about. She grew up in the segregated South, not even allowed to visit museums. She didn't become an artist until she was in her 70s, and later became the first Black woman to have a solo exhibition at Whitney's Museum of Art. Students learn about her life and her unexpected career as an artist, and then they create their own art inspired by her work. The last new lesson we added for grade four this year was about bridge engineering. Students were invited to learn about different types of bridge design, and then were challenged to construct a bridge of their own using only 10 craft sticks, four index cards, four pipe cleaners, and 12 inches of tape. It was especially fun to hear the wonderful discussions the students were having, and then to see them plan, build, test, and problem-solve their designs. This was a great lesson to introduce them to the engineering design process and to give them a preview of what STEM challenges will be like in grade-five. You've heard a few quotes from REACH students throughout this presentation, and that's because at the end of the year, we ask our grade-five students to reflect on their time at REACH. We ask for their feedback about specific projects and lessons, but we also ask them to elaborate on their own personal highlights and challenges. You've heard a lot from us, so we've added these last slides so you can hear from the students themselves. I'm going to read what current students are saying about the grade-five REACH program. "My favorite part of REACH was just sitting and thinking about ways I could make what I was doing better. I was always encouraging myself to make my work more interesting. REACH has so many fun activities, and we got to be really creative. I think the STEM challenges were fun. I liked working with my group to come up with something that can overcome an obstacle, and successful builds are very rewarding." My favorite part of REACH has to be the writing period. I loved writing about pretty much anything. When I was jotting down ideas for my story and planning what my story would be, it was so fun. My imagination about the sequence of events and what the main character does was really one of my favorite things to do. I learned that I could do hard things if I put my mind to it. I also learned that I really like writing and illustrating stories and being creative with all of the activities." Thank you.
So that concludes our REACH and enrichment update in the elementary schools in K-5, and we thank you for all of your support, and we welcome any questions at this time.
Questions from this side. Mrs. Hubley.
Thank you for the wonderful presentation. This was great and very informative. Good. I'm wondering, so when you get the feedback from the students, do you get any feedback that says, like, you know, "I would like to see more of this," or "I would like to see more of that"? Are the parents, do they comment to you that my student really could benefit from more something, and what would that be?
We absolutely have taken student feedback, and even from last year, we've made changes to lesson plans. We've changed timelines. Last year, there were comments that too many projects were happening at the same time, so we sort of changed timelines and deadlines so projects wouldn't overlap as much. We find out what the students really like. The feedback on Fever last year was so good, we knew we would continue with it this year. This year, the feedback on the math meets wasn't as good, so we want to make some changes to that so that we can continue it again next year.
So more math is what you're saying they're looking for?
They, I mean, I feel like they want more art and more STEM is what we're seeing the most.
Okay. And when I look at what you have in here for the schedule, so I have the fifth-grade schedule, so from 9:30 to 11:30, they're back in their homeroom classroom. Is that what I'm hearing?
That varies from school. That was just like a sample day, depending on when they're, whether it's a late school, early school, when their specialists are. That schedule will change. It's really different at every school, but the same components are done at every school.
Okay. And the fourth grader are only meeting on Wednesdays, so they're only meeting on half-days?
Yes, correct.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mrs. Lebo.
I have just a question, if we can get some follow-up data. I'd like to see the demographics. It's kind of important to us about who's being addressed in this program, both in the third and the fourth-grade program, so maybe you could just send that to us as an aside after this meeting so we can take a look. I also would like to know who's moving on to APC from the REACH program, and to see if the REACH program has changed the demographics there over the past couple of years. Again, I think most of these activities, every kid in the school system.
Thank you.
They really are so awesome, so I just want to thank you for the work that you guys do. I'm good.
Mr. Gattro.
Thank you. Great presentation again this year. So can you just refresh my memory? The REACH program, is it a national curriculum, or is it something organically we or others have created in the state?
So it's an organic Quincy Public Schools program. It came out of wanting to expand to every elementary school and have something for enrichment at every building so that staff and students didn't have to leave their school and go to another building, and that we could invite more students to be a part of it. So we voted on a name, we met several times, and the teachers, once they were, we talked about curriculum ideas, and then they spend a lot of time developing the curriculum and revising it because we're only really in year two.
Yeah, I think it's brilliant, it's popular, it's important. I love the fact that we're moving in that direction. So are you saying there's nothing nationally or statewide that any of the school districts create anything comparable to this? Or is there a model out there that, are we just flying by the seat of our pants because we know there's demand and it's the right thing to do? I'm just, whoever wants to answer, whether it's Erin or Maddie.
Other districts in the state have programs for high-achieving students. There are no gifted, Massachusetts doesn't have gifted programs that are state-mandated like some other states do. So yes, other districts within the state have programs that address the needs of high-achieving students. But there's no set curriculum. Each district, I think, is unique in their approach of what they do.
So each of the sessions that you set up, we decide in-house what they should be? And just a brainstorming session, or is it based on?
So we follow, sort of knowing that it's standards-based. I mean, so the fifth graders are, the curriculum that they have, the standards are being addressed within that curriculum. So it's, you know, the fifth-grade ELA standards for writing and reading, the fifth-grade math standards, especially for problem-solving are being addressed. So it's standards-based curriculum for the grade level that it is, but there's no, like, book that we're picking up that's giving us a scripted lesson to do with the students, I guess, if that's.
Yeah, and it expands on what the students are currently doing in their curriculum. So these students, obviously, are ready for more of a challenge with things that they currently do. And one of the goals as we move through this program, which has begun already, and they touched upon it sort of briefly in the presentation, was how to build upon what the kids are already doing so that all students, teachers are more aware of how to identify these types of students. That's a future goal. What we can do with the current curricula to expand and enrich when a teacher, maybe a student, isn't part of REACH that year, but then shows some ability beyond.
Do you request, or are you selected, to participate in REACH?
Selected.
So you can't request?
You can, we've got many requests. We've got many requests, but it is based on the most recent data that we have and historical data.
And the data that you rely on?
The data that we rely on is mostly NWEA map because that is the most recent data that we have, but we look at all of the data. We look at MCAS, we look at previous map data, we look at report cards. All of those things are considered.
And is everybody that fits that criteria in? Or is there only a finite pool because we only have so many people?
So, yeah, so depending on our enrollment, right now, it's the top 20% for grade-five and top 10% for grade-four to participate in this enrichment opportunity.
And the 10% or the 20% is based on people that we don't have enough people to teach? Or that's how the numbers break down, that the students, those are the students based on that?
It's a combination of both. The other piece that we consider, too, is if we took too many students, would they be able to handle missing a day of their, you know, regular curricula in math and ELA? And we found, you know, this year, sometimes that isn't the case, and we have to meet and discuss those situations, and if REACH is a good fit, or maybe potentially it's not a good fit, so.
And two final questions. That was, you gave us three examples of student feedback. Was it universal? Like, everybody that participates absolutely loves it? And how was the feedback solicited?
Yeah, so we gave it a year-end survey on a Google form. Yeah. No, of course, it's not all positive. I mean, some kids find it very difficult. It is rigorous, and a lot of kids struggle with time management, and they say, you know, "I really struggled with managing the projects," or, you know, the writing project, I'd say the majority of children love, but their writing tend to, Rebecca had somebody who wrote 46 pages. I mean, they're writing a lot, and so some kids were like, "That wasn't my cup of tea." What I will say is that the program has so many components that there is usually at least one or two pieces of the program that kids gravitate towards, love, connect with. So I don't think there's a student who's sitting there all day saying, "Oh, but I hate every single thing here." But there are students who definitely prefer different parts of it. I think that's kind of the nice part of it, is that, you know, kids have different learning styles, different interests, and we're able to tap into a lot of different pieces of that for our students. And some kids discover that they love things that they didn't even think they would like, whether that's building or, you know, writing. Some of them say, "This is the first time I really discovered I'm a writer," you know, which is exciting. But no, it's not all positive. And they let us know. They're very honest. A lot of the activities, we have them rate on a scale from one to five, and there are definitely some activities that more kids will rate as a one or two. And we take that feedback very seriously. We're very reflective in the design of what we present to children and our students, and we are constantly improving, tweaking, revising. And like, the stock market this year was added new from last year, and the kids loved it.
That must have been fun, yeah.
It was great. And a lot of students came up to us and were like, "My grandmother bought me stock for Christmas," because they were talking about it, which is awesome. I hope they make a lot of money.
And what's the final question? What's the, say, three-to-five-year plan for K through three?
So I love the idea of giving this opportunity in some way as best we can do it to every child in Quincy. So I think educating our teachers on how to identify it, how to bring it into their classroom every day is a great first step, the three-to-five-year plan. So these teachers are incredible, and I love when you said reflective because they are creating, you know, when I mentioned all the different hats about being curriculum developers, that is not an easy task to do, especially when you're trying to challenge students that are very high-achieving sometimes, and, you know, you want to make sure that they're engaged all of the time with whatever, and trying to spark the interest that they have. So one of the pieces that they mentioned was building Google Sites for teachers, and then also, coming up in the fall, they, we reached out to them, and they gladly accepted our invitation, the teachers, to provide training for teachers about this particular thing, you know? How do you extend your curriculum? How do you ident, how do you even notice when a student is displaying above-average potential? Or how do you bring that out of a student? So they've done a lot of research with that on their own, and now they've experienced it firsthand with the students that they see. But the three-to-five-year plan, I don't know if it's developed.
I mean, it sounds like you have success at grade four and five with structured sessions. So what is the plan for K through three for structured sessions?
Personally, I don't think there is a plan. We initially talked about having a structured session in grade three. I am concerned about that a little bit with students that are just developing their essential foundational skills in reading and in math. Pulling those students out and identifying them, I just think I want to think about that a little bit more because, you know, when they, what if they change, what if they change and they come across something in fourth grade and they were in REACH in second grade, and then it's not going to, you know, that would be, we would never want to do that, say, you know, "You've been part of this, and now you're not going to be a part of it anymore." And I think, you know, up through grade three, building that strong foundation.
Well, didn't you just say that students go through it and they opt out? You know what I mean? Like, because they say, "This isn't for me." They might be super smart, they might be great, but they don't want to do whatever.
Did you say that they opt out?
Well, I thought you said that some students get in it and they realize it's not necessarily for them. Is that, did I mishear that?
No, I think there have been, there, I think there was one instance last year where I had a student who was struggling, missing a day a week. And so we talked with the principal, with Bridgette, and the parents, and it was decided, "This is too much, and she needs to be with her homeroom during the day." But that's an unusual, I mean, that was an unusual circumstance. But that was the right thing for that student, for sure.
Bridgette, are you concerned about how it will affect them if they get in in grade three and then they're not there in grade four or five? Is that what you're saying?
Potentially, but I also, if they are not, so the concern would be, and we would, you know, have to talk about this at great length, about taking them out of their core curriculum at some point, right, during the day? Which, that means they're missing some.
Parents here to rescue.
That means that they're missing some crucial pieces. And so if they're missing that because they're displaying something earlier on from data and then they're missing it, they could potentially fall behind. So that's my concern.
You know, I think that we have talked a lot about grades K, one and two, and three. You know, right now, I think that what we have with the staffing that we have is appropriate. I think that if we were going to expand the program, then we would need to talk about, you know, potentially additional staffing. I think we have a, I don't, so I think that what I would say our plans are right now for K to two is, you know, we are looking at providing professional development to our teachers in those grade-level areas. We are talking about piloting an ICAP, which is an Individual Accommodation Plan for students who are advanced learners. We piloted it this year, and these teachers were amazing in helping us develop it. We asked them, and they ran with it. So, you know, working with teachers, first of all, how do you identify a student in kindergarten as an advanced learner? I think that is a huge task. So I think we have a lot of work to do before we get to the point where we're ready to, you know, potentially start, like, pulling kids out. I think we need to figure out, what does that look like? This is, we've expanded down to fourth grade. I think we would love, if we maybe were to say, you know, in the future, in an ideal world, could we go down to third grade? I think we would love that. But, you know, I think that the K to two, I think we have a lot of work to do, we have a lot of training to do, we have a lot to talk about, you know, because are we testing kids in kindergarten for the REACH program? You know, I mean, I have concerns about that, you know, I think, but I think, you know, getting our teachers, I think my wish would be that we work with our teachers who are amazing and do a great job every day, but it is very hard when you are a first-grade teacher and you have so many things going on, and you have, you know, 20 different learners in your classroom, to have the time to really differentiate for your advanced learners. I think that, I think it works on both ends of the spectrum, your really advanced learners and your struggling learners. So if I were to think about, you know, three years or five years down the line, I'd love to see us look at grade three. I'd love to see us really be implementing the Individual Accommodation Plan for our students that are showing advanced potential, and I'd love for the teachers to feel really confident in their ability.
to feel really confident in their ability to differentiate within their current classrooms. Would be, like, I think those are big things that are going to, they're not, it's not like we can, I can't just roll out tomorrow, you know, like, all the first-grade teachers are going to implement individual accommodation plans without training, without some real support. And so, these wonderful teachers have, you know, kind of taken on that task with us and are going to help us next year work with the teachers on rolling out, like, how are we identifying kids that are showing advanced potential? How are we supporting them in the regular classroom? How are we documenting that to show what we're doing? And then how is that working? And so, so that's kind of our goal, like, our immediate goal for the future.
Perfect. Thank you.
Mrs. Cahill.
Questions. I did have one question, though. Is this, so we don't take the kids, when my kids were in the Quincy Public Schools, they would leave once a week and go to Montclair. So this is the same program, basically, but they don't get taken out of their school. So I love that because I think, again, you know, keeps them what they're in school and it also gives more kids the opportunity to get the, you know, the advanced placement projects. And I do remember them, I think the biggest piece is, the enrichment's great, but the time management and the rigor of getting used to, you know, because if I remember correctly, the curriculum is the same, but it's just, it's more rigorous. And then also gives them opportunity to do projects that maybe interest them and kind of pique a different interest. But, so it's the same program. I just wanted to kind of confirm that in my own mind. But thank you. Thank you for the presentation.
Mr. Bergoli.
Thank you for the presentation. Developmentally, for some of those younger kids, they may not be ready for this type of activity, am I correct?
Right. And I think that's what Bridget was kind of talking, yeah. Yeah, I think that's the challenge is, right, that you could potentially have a student that is, say, in first grade, who may not in first grade be showing signs of advanced learning ability, but then in third grade they blossom, or in fourth grade they blossom. And so, I think it's like those logistics that you really have to think about and work out. And I don't, I don't think there's like, there's easy answers. And as Mr. Gattuso said, there is not a state model. I mean, it would be great if there was, if there was a, and I know the state does have a team that is, that is working on this, you know, across the Commonwealth. But I think we know we need to do more for our youngest learners in terms of offering advanced opportunities. And I definitely think that that's a goal of this team, for sure. And so I think that that's, that's something that we're going to be working on. And, you know, we'll come back to you and update you and share with you, you know, how we're approaching that.
And I'll just add to that. You know, when this initially started, it was because we were taking the advanced placement program during that COVID year and dividing it with several different classes online virtually. And that's sort of how this evolved to being at every single school. And so our third graders right now just took MCAS for the first time. So we've hit, you know, a couple of bumps, not many, but with students that may have done well on MAP, but, you know, they're, they're sort of in different places after the pandemic. So now with these younger kids, I think we could, and that's our, it is our goal to expand it even more. Every year, we've expanded it a bit more. But I think, you know, making sure that we don't go too fast, and that's why I think it's been so successful. We consulted with another district where they had some challenges and we wanted to avoid those. And so I think it's been super successful thus far.
So, I love the way the program's evolved from the lab program to what you're doing now. And the success of this program is contingent upon having fabulous teachers. And I know some of these people who are in front of us right now are just the best of the best. And that's, that's the reason the program's successful.
Absolutely.
So, kudos to you guys that, you know, your schools miss you because you're a big, you're a big part of Marymount Don, and I know you're a big part of your school. But it's, it's the system's game. So you have to kind of like balance that out. I know Don always did a great job with Shakespeare. I know you did. And you were terrific at it, too. So thank you very much.
Mrs. Lebo.
I just have one concern. I always had concern about the APC class because it didn't address students who are very, very strong in either ELA or math. You had to be very, very strong in both. And so a lot of English learners were not getting into that program. But we fixed that by putting advanced classes in all of our middle schools, including Central, the kids who didn't, who didn't go across the board. And what I worry about in this class is, again, you, do you have any English learners in there? And, I mean, I think when kids have to be great at both things, I just don't know how fear that is, when there might be kids who really are ready to soar in one area or the other.
I haven't seen it as much with English learners or ELA, but I have had instances of a math teacher coming to me and saying, this student's math scores are going down. I'm worried that they're missing my math class. And one of the advantages of being in the building is I can say, okay, great, keep them for math, and then send them to me afterwards. So the students are getting what they need. So that student might miss, you know, the morning warm-up or whatever to have their regular math lesson every week, but then they get to be with me for the rest of the day. So we can address it that way because we're in the buildings.
Yeah. And that's great. But I still worry that we're missing kids who are really strong in science or something. And I don't know the answer, but it's a concern.
Thank you.
You're good? Mrs. Lebo. Mrs. Hubley.
Thank you. My concern with the going down of the K1 is the social-emotional learning versus the educational readiness that they would have to learn. That would be something that I would be very concerned about with our, with our observations and testings of the students at that young age. And I was, how you would balance that?
Yeah. I mean, I think that's a legitimate concern. I, you know, I think there's, you know, there's a lot of social development that happens in the younger grades. And so I think that's why, I think we all recognize that we need to do something for our advanced learners in our younger grades. And so that's why I think we feel like the first step is working with our teachers. And let's working on, let's work on, like, how, as I said, how are we identifying those students? What opportunities are we providing for them within the classroom? Do the teachers have the training and support that they need to be able to offer advanced learning opportunities? And then how are we documenting and tracking what we're doing? So, you know, if, you know, when we're working with families, it's important that we have information that says, well, these are the things that we're providing. These are the things that we're trying. These are the things that we're having success with. These are the things we're not having success with. And that we're documenting that along the way. So I think that that's where we're at as a team. And then we'll go from there. And we'll, and, you know, we'll see, I think, but that's going to be a big undertaking. So to get our teachers ready to do things like that is what we're planning on starting, you know, in the fall. We piloted it a little bit this year. And so we're going to be, we're going to be really working with our teachers in the fall on that piece of this.
Okay. And in here, we have 77 kids that are in the fourth grade currently. Are all of them moving to the fifth grade next year in this program? None of them decided that they were going to drop out?
They seem very psyched.
Thank you.
Many years ago, I sat with Dr. Carmen Mariano with a group of people trying to figure out what we could do as a system to reach these kids. The sixth grade, the lab program was great. It was project-based. The kids learned how to do great projects. But we were missing a lot of people. I want to thank you for gathering up those people that we've missed in a way that we're moving forward to reach the advanced learner, especially in the younger grades. I think it's a great thing. It's something I always envisioned happening. It's happening, and I thank you for that. My only request is that you let me come and do a lesson on binary code and how it's related to the Korean flag, if you didn't know that. I would love to give that lesson, as well as creating starfish math. Have you heard of that? Base five starfish math? I'd love to do a lesson on that, as well as maybe expressing how the Fibonacci sequence is related to nature. So, please let me in someday because I'd love to sit with these kids. Thank you very much. I'll do it.
Thank you.
Okay, we're down to item C, Quincy Public Schools Budget Transfers. This is up for a vote. We have Mr. Mulaney here this evening. Mr. Mulaney.
Thank you. Thank you. Real quick, we're making some budget transfer requests for you. We touched on a couple of the items that were going to be in deficit. Currently, we're looking to fund $45,000 for professional, teacher professional discretionary, that's contractual, and electricity and natural gas. We had shortfalls of $350,000 and $200,000. We're looking at transferring from salary lines, $188,000, translation services, $287,000, telephone, $45,000, legal fees, $20,000, gasoline, $25,000, and postage, $30,000 to cover those areas of deficit. And then the second entry, as we talked about at the Budget Subcommittee back in March, we're anticipating a pretty significant surplus overall, and especially mostly from this, well, entirely from the salary line. So we've been discussing it and we're taking your recommendations to heart, the technology pieces. So we've got some quotes for technology that we're going to need to, Chromebooks and computers to start upgrading again, and also some security hardware and software. So what we're recommending is we transfer $983,000 to technology and security purchases and reduce salaries by $983,000 the same. So, the first one is to address our deficits, and then the other is to basically get some additional items that would be coming to be paid for in future years. So we can make a step at it for this year.
Questions, comments? Mr. Gattuso.
A million dollars to spare in the salary line?
Yes, we did. The way the salaries, I think if you remember, there was a, it's a combination of two things. Instead of having the raises on the city side, they were, they were put into our budget and we had a reserve for them. And then the second item was, there was an awful lot of mid-year breakage that we had during the year, plus certain lines were not fully expended, the power lines, we didn't have enough powers. It would like to have had the substantial reduction in the substitute teaching line was another big one. So all, all in all, we had significant savings. And we discussed that at the meeting prior, so.
What about the translation? What's the full translation services budget? And how do we have $287,000 left?
Well, we've got $500,000 in it.
That's what, at the beginning of the year?
Correct, yeah. Well, we're using a lot of translation services. We recommended in the current budget to keep it at the $500,000, even though we hadn't used the whole amount, just because we know it's becoming a bigger and bigger thing. We've been very fortunate using a translation service. I forget the name of it. Yep. But there's also a great need coming up for translating documents, which is significantly more expensive than having a translator on a phone call or a meeting. So that's why we're recommending keeping that.
I got it. Thank you very much.
Anyone else? On a motion of Mrs. Lebo to approve the changes seconded by Mrs. Hubley, Superintendent, any discussion? Superintendent, call the roll.
Mr. Bergoli?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you all.
Okay, we have a DC grant of $90,000 for early college high school. This is up for a vote. Superintendent Mulvey.
Thank you. The money for early college keeps coming into the district. I have to thank Keith Sagala, Executive Director Keith Sagala, for his work in identifying, continuing to identify grants coming in for early college. An additional $90,000 in funding has been granted by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education to support the early college high school program. This brings the total current amount to $417,000 for this school year, including the summer program. With that, I would ask the committee to approve this grant of $90,000.
On a motion of Mr. Gattuso seconded by Mrs. Cahill, we approve. Any discussion? Superintendent, call the roll.
Mr. Bergoli?
Yes.
Mrs. Cahill?
Yes.
Mr. Gattuso?
Yes.
Mrs. Hubley?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Sagala.
We have a donation of 110 bicycles and helmets to the Clifford Marshall School for grade one students. Superintendent?
Very excited. This is an amazing donation. The Clifford Marshall Elementary School was selected for a surprise bike and helmet donation as part of their commitment to getting kids outside and active, canned aid partnered with Yasso, the yogurt company, and the Yasso Game On Initiative Foundation to donate 110 new bicycles and helmets to every first-grade student at the Marshall Elementary School. The approximate value of this donation is $16,500. I'm happy to report that the bicycles arrived last week, as well as the helmets. And the students were thrilled to receive these items. It was an amazing sight to see. And there was an acrobat stunt performer on the bikes and that sort of thing, actually riding over staff, which made me a little nervous. But no one was injured, which was great. But with that, I would ask if the committee could approve this donation.
Motion to approve.
On a motion, Mrs. Hubley seconded by Mrs. Lebo. Any discussion? On the motion, Mrs. Lebo.
Absolutely. Yes, I will.
I was there. It was an exciting event to see the little ones, so excited. Now, if we don't vote for this, does that mean we have to give the bikes back?
Yes. Yes, we will have to go and take them away.
Superintendent, call the roll.
Mr. Bergoli?
Yes.
Mrs. Cahill?
Yes.
Mr. Gattuso?
Yes.
Mrs. Hubley?
Yes.
Mrs. Lebo?
Yes.
Mrs. Santoro?
Yes.
And Mayakoke?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, item F, the naming of the Quincy High School Basketball Court. I'd like to refer this to the Policy Subcommittee. Mrs. Hubley is asking that we move three items to her Special Education Subcommittee. They are dealing with transportation, staff training, and communication. Unless there's objection, we'll move those forward. Okay. We have Superintendent Mulvey's contract. Mayakoke.
As we know, the superintendent's contract is up this summer. I know you have your packet in the car, contract. We're going to go into executive session to discuss this later on.
Okay. Item K, memorandum of agreement between the Quincy School Committee and the Painters and Allied Trades District Council Number 35, Local 1911, in units A and B. Again, Mayakoke.
I defer to our HR Director, Mrs. Cox, if you want to comment on this. Or are we just going to make a motion to approve?
Entirely up to you.
All right, make a motion to approve.
Seconded by Mrs. Hubley. Oh, sorry. Mr. Gattuso seconded that motion. Any discussion? Superintendent, call the roll.
Mr. Bergoli?
Yes.
Mrs. Cahill?
Yes.
Mr. Gattuso?
Yes.
Mrs. Hubley?
Yes.
Mrs. Lebo?
Yes.
Mrs. Santoro?
Yes.
And Mayakoke?
Yes.
Thank you.
Additional business? Seeing none. Communications, seeing none. Reports of subcommittees. We have the Budget and Finance Subcommittee of May 24th. Mayakoke.
Well, we just voted on the budget, so it's a moot point. So I'll just go on to the next one.
I really wanted to hear the report.
We'll hang around afterwards.
Item B, Facilities and Transportation and Security, May 24th meeting. Mr. Gattuso.
This is an executive session, so I'm not going to read the meeting minutes, but it was about the security audit that the mayor advanced and the school committee supported. And I'll just say that this week's event is a reminder about the importance of this topic and why we should be vigilant year-round, each and every year. So, more to come.
Okay. Item C, Special Education Meeting of May 31st. Mrs. Hubley?
but it was about the security audit that the mayor advanced and the school committee supported. And I'll, I'll just say that this week's event is a reminder about the importance of this topic and, and why we should be vigilant year-round, each and every year. So more to come.
Okay. Item C, Special Education Meeting of May 31st. Mrs. Hubley.
Okay, on May 31st, we had a meeting of the Special Education Subcommittee meeting. Mr. Markucci reviewed that the LEAP program at North Quincy High School is for students age 18 to 22 with autism or intellectual disabilities who have matriculated from high school and want to continue their post-secondary education. And a few of the students spoke, Sean Ryan, Chloe Perry-Paul, Andrew Nickerson, and James Haley. And they did an absolutely fabulous job. They were very impressive. We all were very impressed with them. And they are volunteering in school and community and training for employment. The Quincy Parents Advisory Council of Special Education Board members, Sarah Wood, Ginger McGill, Darrell Wilson, and Melissa O'Ricky, presented their goals for next year, which three of them we just incorporated into our Special Education Subcommittee, which was the Special Education Transportation, where their goal was collaborate with QPS families to better understand the ongoing transportation challenges and capitalize on what's going well. And the other one was to educate, Special Education Staff Training, which was to collaborate with QPS to provide training for staff. And Special Education Communication, their goal was to create a standard to improve communication between caregivers and staff, starting with CARES program. And they had other goals, but they were more shifted towards their, their goals. And the rest of it is online. You can read it in full on our website. Thank you.
Okay. Item D, Teaching and Learning, May 31st meeting. Mrs. Lebo.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Santoro. So we had a presentation from Dove on the 31st. Ms. Bolton, Ms. Chandler, and Mrs. Trong presented to us what they were doing with our schools and where they're, where they're interfacing with our middle schools and our high school students. And we're very excited with this partnership. Thanks to the mayor for really supporting this effort in the past couple of years. Dove is in here in a very strong way, working with our curriculum and our social emotional learning, part of our health curriculum, and is a big part of it. It was, it's really nice to see. There's some inconsistency about what, what students are being reached across the district, but they said they're working on that and they'll continue to expand roles to make sure that all students are being reached. So it was really great. And the second presentation we have with Digital Literacy Specialist, Nancy Sorani, Elizabeth Kelly, and Kimberly Walsh. They presented an update on the program. The Massachusetts Digital Literacy and Computer Science Standards are being presented to our students in our elementary schools. We had some questions about the students at, at Point and, and Southwest in the 5th grade, whether or not they were getting the same thing and how important it might be for those students to be able to get the same materials and same information. I know they're in the Technology and Engineering class at those schools as opposed to the digital learning. So they're looking at that anyway. And I also asked if we could have a presentation on artificial intelligence. They know what it is and I don't.
There is one addition we'd like to make to the minutes, and that is that Mrs. Cahill is not included in the attendance in, because she spoke later on in the meeting. I believe you were there. Okay. At this time, we're going in, we'll take a motion to go into executive session for contract negotiations. We will be coming back, but prior to doing that,